Okay. Oh, hello. Okay, I'll have to tone my voice down a little. First of all, I'd like to welcome everyone. You're gonna have to be a little patient today. We've been trained on our system with only eight counselors in the room. And now we have all our directors back, so you'll have to be patient as I prompt you to speak. But I will. Counselor Lennox Epp, are you on?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Lennox Zampier will be joining us by teams. Happy mum.
Thank you.
And you're welcome. And so everyone just have to be a little patient because this is sort of new, starting us up again with all these other buttons now for us to push. But we'll try to make it smooth. So I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I'd like to acknowledge that we're on Treaty Six land, the home of the Maytee. And I'd ask everyone to rise and the city clerk to say the prayer.
Oh God, let us each in our own way ask your wisdom and guidance in our deliberations. Help us to incorporate into all our decisions those values which will enable us to fulfill our mission, to act as responsible stewards, and to respect and follow the cultural and spiritual traditions of all citizens of the City of Prince Albert. For this we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Now, I'll move to number three. Approval of the agenda. Counselor Head.
Thank you, Your Worship. That the agenda for this meeting be approved as presented and that the presentation's delegation of speakers listed on the agenda be heard when called forward by the mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Kilmer.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Whoa, sorry. And we have one amendment. Go ahead.
As you, on your desk, there is correspondence from Roger Paget regarding the bicycle bylaws. His correspondence is on the agenda and was received after the agenda went out.
Okay, thank you.
He is also asking for an opportunity to speak. Sorry.
Okay, so do you mind amending that to give them that opportunity?
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you. And Seconder?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay. So I'll prompt the vote. Okay, the vote is open. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. I'd like to remind everyone, all the counselors, a declaration of conflict of interest, if you have any, you have to declare them at the time and explain why. Number five, adoption of the minutes. Counselor Miller.
That the minutes of the council regular council meeting held June 14, 2021 be taken, read, and adopted.
Thank you. Seconder?
Counselor Head.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I'll prompt the vote. Vote is open. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Notice of proclamations, I've done, I did two since our last meeting. 6.1 Food Day in Canada, July 31, 2021. 6.2 National Drowning Prevention Week, July 18 to the 24th, 2021. And the best way to prevent a drowning is to wear a life jacket. Don't sit on it, wear it. Number seven, presentations. We have none. Public hearings, we have none. Delegations. We have a delegation for 9.1 Development Permit Application Residential Care Home, 130 Hadley Road. And we have a speaker that would like to speak. So if you would go to the podium and identify yourself, please. And you have five minutes to make your presentation. Just give me one minute, I have to prompt your thing. Okay, sorry. You're now live. Go ahead, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor, counselors, and other guests. My name is Chelsea Bergen, and that's my husband, Matthew, sitting over there. And we're from 134 Hadley Road in Prince Albert. We are here today to express our concerns about the group home proposal for 130 Hadley Road. We built our home five years ago and have been living amongst vacant properties since 2016. We are more than ready to have neighbors and a fully developed street. Therefore, when we received notice of this group home proposal, we kept an open mind, attended the information meeting, and did our own research. There are a number of reasons why we do not believe this group home is a good idea for our street at this time. At the informational meeting, I asked two questions that were not quite the same as the questions listed in the report. The first question was, what guarantee do the residents of this street have that this home won't change organizations like two other homes nearby did after approval? The response was, there is no guarantee, and there is a risk of changing organizations. The potential for this home to change purposes at any time will not attract buyers to our neighborhood. The fact that this building is run like a business with employees coming and going will not attract buyers. We already have a few other group homes in the neighborhood where we have observed many undesirable scenarios. We have seen many vehicles parked out front and across sidewalks, employees smoking in the front yard and throwing cigarette ends on the street, frequent police visits, siding falling off, garage windows smashed, et cetera. If any of these scenarios are observed at this location, it will most definitely deter buyers from the neighborhood. The second question I asked at the informational meeting was, is this building going to consist of one level built on slab like the building plan shows? The response was that the SHC generally builds with a basement for storage, but nothing specific was answered about this building plan. The city planner present added that building plans were still in the process of approval. This building plan matters. The plan included in the letter appears similar to a one-level hall. In an existing neighborhood, this plan might not make much difference. However, in the middle of a developing neighborhood, this plan, as pictured, has the potential to deter buyers. Why do we believe these scenarios will deter buyers? One reason is because we've spoken to residents that live next to current group homes in the neighborhood to hear their experiences. They have all experienced the scenarios I mentioned earlier and more, and they have said they would not intentionally buy a lot next to an existing group home to build their forever home. Another reason is because we have spoken to realtors in the city who have told us that our property value will decrease by approximately 15% if this home is built next door to us. And they also stated that homes located near group homes take much longer to sell unless the price is significantly reduced. While this is personally concerning, in the bigger picture, it also strongly suggests that the other vacant properties on the street will become hard to sell. We fully understand that group homes serve an important need in our community and provide great diversity in neighborhoods. At the same time, we need to consider balancing these opportunities out within our city. Our street already includes a group home. We have approximately eight others nearby and over 20 in our ward. These homes were all placed in existing neighborhoods and therefore had no effect on surrounding development. In order to encourage future development on our street, we do not believe that now, in this current stage of vacancy, is the time to approve a home of this type. Our street currently has so many hopeful things going for it. The lot discount finally returned, the weeds on vacant lots are maintained nicely, and we recently received our final layer of asphalt. All of this prompted us to organize our own neighborhood cleanup, which eliminated years' worth of built-up garbage. All of these are current incentives to buy property here. After living amongst vacant properties for five years, our wish is for the city to focus on selling lots in this development. The bottom line is, approving a second group home on our street that looks like a business, functions like a business, and has the potential to change organizations at any time is not an incentive to purchase a lot on Hadley Road. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak about our concerns today and for your consideration of what is best for future development in our great neighborhood that we care so much about. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Brodnik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chelsea and Matt, for your presentation and for your discussions over the past month or so on this particular issue. I am going to change the motion to read that the discretionary use development permit application for residential care home be located, to be located at 130 Hadley Road be denied. Just the last word, be denied. And the reason I'm doing that is, first of all, I want to say I'm in favor of care homes. I believe, I believe they're very much needed. However, the last two care homes in my ward, as Chelsea pointed out, I got burned on. We got, we as a city council got burned on. They've changed significantly. And until there's a guarantee that, that you're going in there with, with a disabled adults, this is what this one is, disabled adults. Well, the one on Kernahan was disabled adults. We, and the neighborhood approved it, and they embraced it. They, they, they worked with the company from CDI from Winnipeg and said, this is a great thing for our neighborhood. And then a year later, it gets sold and it changes significantly to another organization, and they're not disabled adults. Now, this one is disabled adults, and so when you oppose it, it looks like you're against disabled adults. I'm not. I'm against companies setting up these care homes to make it look like, how can you deny this request? And then changing it. You know, the other one on Hadley, as Chelsea said, we had two, this is gonna be, could be the second one on Hadley. How many of us in our, in our city have two care homes? I do on Brannion. I have two care homes on Brannion, about a block and a half away, and one around the corner. And, and they're run, they're run well. But, but again, we're, we're looking at properties that, as Chelsea said, that is, is some of the highest taxed property in the city. $6,000 these people are paying in taxes. We're gonna lose that $6,000. We also have the potential to lose selling another lot in that area. You know, we have 27 lots in that area for sale right now. We had to reduce the price to sell them. We're not gonna sell lots if this, if this care home gets approved. One other thing that I need to point out to all the residents of Crescent Acres is I never got a personal invite to that meeting. I didn't attend that meeting. That information meeting, that, that information meeting for the, for the neighborhood. I, I was notified a long time ago, like all other counselors in this room, that there's going to be a meeting, but I never got a personal invite to attend that meeting that night, so I didn't attend it. And I, and I apologize to Chelsea and Matt that I didn't attend it, but because I didn't know about it. And so here, you have the opportunity to have your, your area counselor, and that organization doesn't even invite me to, to come and be a part of a huge decision. So, so that, you know, makes me uncomfortable on, on approving this type of a care home. I talked about the nature of the care homes, okay? That, that has to be a guarantee for us as city counselors here, is, is that there has to be at least a 10-year or 15, or whatever, that if that care home is, is going to be approved, it stays as what they're presenting to us. The one on 10 Hadley, those people stood there and told me, this is what's going in there. It never even opened up with that in there, with, with the clients that they wanted in there. They changed it significantly. The design, as Chelsea said, the design, when you look at the design of this care home, it's, it's a beautiful bungalow that fits on Brannion Drive or Crescent Heights. It doesn't fit in Crescent Acres, on Hadley, or any of those areas. When you look at those homes in those areas, they, they are two-story homes, or they, they are, they're not bungalows. And so, again, you wanna maintain that character. When we look at, at a new building in, like, for example, on West Hill there, when we did the, on the 22nd Street, those new buildings fit into the neighborhood. This is gonna look like, it's gonna be an eyesore to the neighborhood. So that's another reason why. I mentioned taxes. A number of care homes, as Chelsea mentioned, we have eight in that neighborhood. And there are some really good care homes. You know, the, the, there's one on Smiley where, where, again, it's adults, and the resident lives in the home, you wouldn't know that it's a care home. The other ones, you know they're care homes. The, the, as Chelsea said, the, the property is not maintained, the building itself is, is getting run down, and repairs are not done immediately. You wouldn't, you, if you lived there, you wouldn't be doing that. You wouldn't be leaving it like that. So I, I'm opposed to, to these care homes, this care home. I'm opposed, and I'm going to oppose every care home now until we have a guarantee in writing by those companies that this is what they're going to run that care home as. And until we have that, I don't think anybody in this, in this chamber would, would want to be fooled by, by an organization. And that's what they're doing to us. I'm not opposed to care homes, but I just want them to be honest with us. This is what's going to happen. And as Chelsea said in that information session, she asked the question, what is the guarantee that this is gonna remain disabled adults? And they said, there is no guarantee. So how can we approve this? We had that one, as I said, on Kernahan, it was disabled adults, and, and a year later, it's not needed. And now, all of a sudden, we're going to this expensive property, and another care home for disabled adults is needed. So I ask my colleagues, I hope somebody will second my motion to deny this, and I ask my colleagues to support the denial of this care home at this particular location for the reasons that I outlined. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Chelsea and Matt, for your presentation.
Thank you. Once I get a second, I'll open up for discussion. Counselor Cody.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship, and thank you very much, Chelsea and, and Matt, for coming and giving us this, this excellent presentation. I'm going to second this motion to deny. I, like others in our, in our council, do not say there is not room for care homes, and they're a good thing to have. But I cannot believe that the government is now starting to get into the care home business themselves. I don't think that's, that's the way they should go. First of all, they gotta buy a lot. I'm sure the lot is gonna cost $80,000 or $90,000. Then they're gonna build a home that's gonna be worth probably $300,000 to $400,000. Well, you know, you can go to any one of those homes that you want today, where the people own their home, look after their home, and took, and take in these kinds of folks. I think that's the better way to go than the government getting into this business because someone is going to have to be employed to do this work, and you can be rest assured, it's not going to be the same as someone who owns their own home and, and looks after those folks. I think they looked after them better, and I think they can, they can do a better job. And so I just don't, cannot see why we would want to support something like this that is, is, I don't know why the government's into this. If they want to have homes, they, there's lots of people looking for this kind of a business to run. It's a good business, and I know lots of people in, that have care homes, and, you know, it doesn't cost the government 10 cents, other than the looking after the people. Here, they're going to build a place, buy a lot, and look after the people. Something's wrong with this scenario. There's something has gone wrong. And I don't think that there's a cry for more homes. If there is, I can tell you right now, I know two or three people that will take one, two, or two more people in their homes, and they can't get them because there's an overabundance of them. So I, I think this is not one of the ones that I would be prepared to support. So I agree with Counselor Brodnik that I would support denial.
Thank you. Counselor Head.
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess a few questions. You know, yeah, I, it's weird that they're building a house in today's market, and definitely when, when the funding is, government changes funding, it's definitely priorities have changed. But I guess, how long has these 27 lots been up for sale for the City of Prince Albert? That would be my first question.
Okay. Now, just hang on, Director. Oh, put your button. Yep. You gotta have your button turned on, or I can't get you. Oh, there you go. Go ahead, Director.
Thank you, Counselor Head, for the question. The year we developed those lots, it's certainly been several years. Director of Public Works, do you have an idea?
2013. So about seven years, eight years.
So they've been, so they've been for sale for some time, and, and definitely, you know, we want those, those properties to move. If they, if this was denied, is there another location that was talked about or discussed with this organization as well?
Thanks again for the question, Counselor Head. No, this is the only location they, they asked about. We don't get into, you know, the businesses of how or why they make their decisions. They, they made the application based on this lot, and we processed, processed it as we received it. Thank you.
Okay, I have a question for the Director. So is it true that they can open today with four special needs people and a year later sell and change the use without coming back to council?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. So ownership or occupancy does not impact land use. So as long as it stays as a residential care home, whether it's adults, whether it's 16-year-olds, 15-year-olds, that does not require further council approval. However, if there is additional impact to the neighborhood, if all of a sudden they need more parking, or there's, there's different further considerations to be made that impact the neighborhood, other than who these individuals are, then a further permit would be required. But if it's simply an ownership change, that does not require city council approval.
So, I'm just gonna affirm this because I'm gonna vote no because of what you're saying to me. So today, I want to approve a special care home for special needs people. I do. But you're telling me in a year from now, and you said if it impacts the neighborhood, well, I believe if it's going from disabled people to young adolescents or people in the justice system, that does impact the neighborhood. But they don't have to notify us, they can do the change.
Well, one, one of the examples that you gave, if they're a product of the justice system, that is a different use. That's called a custodial care facility. But if you go from intellectually disabled adults to intellectually disabled or at-risk youth or, or teens or something like that, those, we, we don't make decisions based on, on who people are, who the operators are. That is not part of our zoning by law considerations.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So with that said, I will be supporting Counselor Brodnik because I do believe, my heart is with, as everyone knows, with special needs people. But I am also very respectful of the neighborhood, and I'm today prepared to approve a special needs home. But unfortunately, that's not what I'm approving. I'm approving a home. And at any point that the ownership changes, the use can change. So I too will not support this home for that reason. If it was told to me that it's disabled, and if the change happens that they have to come back to this body to change the use, then I can assure the neighborhood I would be voting in favor of a special needs home. But now that I know it's a factual thing, that they can change that home without coming back to us, I cannot support it. Any other comments before I call the vote? Counselor Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor Dion. And just a couple notes. I, I agree with many of my colleagues' concerns. I do feel burnt a little bit from the previous care home that we, we approved on Hadley Road. We were told right in that meeting that if we're gonna change the needs, we're gonna come back to council to get approval, and that never happened. And now, this isn't the same organization, but this is why I can't agree with the original motion. I'm gonna support the motion to be denied because, to me, it does change the community if these are altered. And, you know, high-risk needs for children or for youth, if it becomes that, if it becomes a homeless shelter, if it, you know, those things impact the neighborhoods. And, and we should, as council, have that say. And I think we need to bring a motion forward at some point that, that does designate that, that does give us that option to, to allow these organizations to change hands as they are. So I'm gonna support the motion.
Thank you. Counselor Zarikowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few thoughts, if I may. First of all, I wanna fact-check a couple things. A few group homes were mentioned in this room already today. Kernahan, I think Hadley was mentioned before. So if I can just confirm with the, with administration, those two group homes came to us with an ask, with a certain use, and that's what's important. How is that facility, how is that building being used? How is it being operated? But you're telling me in a year from now, and you said if it impacts the neighborhood, well, I believe if it's going from disabled people to young adolescents or people in the justice system, that does impact the neighborhood. But they don't have to notify us. They can do the change.
Well, one of the examples that you gave, if they're a product of the justice system, that is a different use. That's called a custodial care facility. But if you go from intellectually disabled adults to intellectually disabled or at-risk youth or teens or something like that, those, we don't make decisions based on who people are or who the operators are. That is not part of our zoning bylaw considerations.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So with that said, I will be supporting Counselor Brodnik because I do believe, my heart is with, as everyone knows, with special needs people. But I am also very respectful of the neighborhood and I'm today prepared to approve a special needs home. But unfortunately, that's not what I'm approving. I'm approving a home. And at any point that the ownership changes, the use can change. So I too will not support this home for that reason. If it was told to me that it's disabled and if the change happens that they have to come back to this body to change the use, then I can assure the neighborhood I would be voting in favor of a special needs home. But now that I know it's a factual thing, that they can change that home without coming back to us, I cannot support it. Any other comments before I call the vote? Counselor Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor Dion, and just a couple of notes. I agree with many of my colleagues' concerns. I do feel burnt a little bit from the previous care home that we approved on Hadley Road. We were told right in that meeting that if we're gonna change the needs, we're gonna come back to council to get approval and that never happened. And now, this isn't the same organization, but this is why I can't agree with the original motion. I'm gonna support the motion to be denied because to me, it does change the community if these are altered. And, you know, high-risk needs for children or for youth, if it becomes that, if it becomes a homeless shelter, if, you know, those things impact the neighborhoods. And we should, as council, have that say. And I think we need to bring a motion forward at some point that does designate that, that does give us that option to allow these organizations to change hands as they are. So I'm gonna support the motion.
Thank you. Counselor Zarikowski?
Mr. Mayor, a few thoughts if I may. First of all, I wanna fact-check a couple of things. A few group homes were mentioned in this room already today. Kernahan, I think Hadley was mentioned before. So if I can just confirm with the administration, those two group homes came to us with an ask with a certain use and that's what's important. How is that facility, how is that building being used? How is it being operated? Did that use change without coming back to council?
Director? Yeah. I got everybody on, so nobody talk on a turn.
Thank you, Counselors Zarikowski. I certainly don't want to give false information to council. I did hear of one that changed hands and our planning manager took a look at it to make sure that it did not impact the neighborhood from a land use perspective. It continues to be a residential care home with the same number of people through our confirmation, which does not trigger a further council approval. However, the second one you spoke of, I'll have to speak with our planning manager and see if we've been informed of that and I'd be happy to follow up.
Okay, thank you. Because to me, that's what I'm hearing is important and obviously it's important to the neighbors. How is that facility being used? Whether somebody buys it? I've heard on one of the ones you just done in paraphrase, make sure I get this correct, that the change of use did not change. It continued to be used as the initial ask was. Is that correct? The use didn't change?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselors Zarikowski. That is correct. It continues to be used as a residential care home. We do always provide a letter from the operator to give the public an idea of what their plans are. However, as long as that continues to be used as a residential care home, which it has, it does not require council approval. If a new operator moves in there and their programming changes, that's their business. That is not my business as Director of Planning and Development.
Thank you. Another follow-up if I may. So if this is approved and there is a change of use, let me back up. If this is approved and a year from now, the operators, the owners wish to change the use from adults with disabilities to youth at risk, is that a change of use that would trigger coming back to council?
Thank you, Counselors Zarikowski, for the question. Just to clarify, when we talk about use, we're talking about two different things a little bit. Residential care home is the use and it'll continue to be the use. Every application or follow-up that we get is based on its own merits. So if that change of use triggers, you know, perhaps intense physiotherapy and visits from doctors and comingings of goings of programming and, you know, group buses and things like that that it didn't before, absolutely that has an impact on the traffic in the neighborhood. If it's simply one operator with five people moving over to another operator with five people and they don't, there's no additional services or anything like that provided, then it would not trigger further council approval.
Yeah, and I think that's important to the neighbors that they know the needs of this one location will change. There's gonna be more traffic, it's gonna be busier, the program is going to change, it's going to begin attraction to that location. So, sorry, pardon me, I just wanna pull on the string a little bit further. So, we talked about residential care homes. So if it changed from adults with disabilities, and that's what I read in here, to a year or two from now to youth at risk, would that trigger coming back to council that change of use with different clientele? Because we've had asks come to us before where it's like it's youth at risk, ages eighteen to twenty-one, eighteen to twenty-four. That's not what I'm seeing here. It's adults with disabilities that will be using this facility. So specifically, my question is, if that changed to youth at risk, would that trigger coming back to council and informing the neighborhood?
If I could just butt in, can we just say youth? Because when you say youth at risk, then I think the justice system and that would come back to us. But if it's just youth, it would not come back to us.
So I don't think that once you talk about the justice system, that's something different. And I've learned that whenever we talked about justice system or folks who have left the criminal justice system, that we have more power and control when it comes to that. And that's what I've heard, is this has nothing to do and youth at risk may or may not have anything to do with the criminal justice system.
That is correct.
Thank you.
If they've already been in the criminal justice system, that is a custodial care facility, that's different. If you're moving them from their current situations, maybe they live in an unsafe environment and that they're at risk and we wanna head that off before it happens, that is still a residential care home. As long as the numbers remain the same, say five to five, the same types of services are being provided, supervision by one or two staff, and all else being equal, I'm making some assumptions there, all else being equal, it would not require further council approval.
So all things being equal, you're housing five or six adults with disabilities. Two years from now, you're housing seventeen, eighteen, twenty-one-year-olds who have been removed from at-risk situations, that would not trigger coming back to council?
No, it wouldn't.
Thank you. Thank you for that. That's it for my questions. I do have a couple of other comments. One of the things I'm really, I was really disturbed by was the lack of attention this operator, this owner, had to the design of the structure. To me, the best, I've learned this, the best group homes are ones that fit within the neighborhood, that make the effort to fit within the neighborhood. That includes the structures. They shouldn't stick out. They shouldn't be eyesore's. The best ones are ones that fit in. And when I saw the design of the building and confirmed by administration, I just don't think that that's a good fit for that area at all. We've been through some of these asks before where the developers come in and that's one of the asks of our developers is make this subdivision, make this development fit within that area, within the neighborhood. And I think it's a failing grade on that ask. The other one, I'm sorry, I did have one other question. Do we have any information, the Saskatchewan Housing Corporation, I'm assuming they operate a number of facilities in the city. Do we have any information as to the number of bylaw calls that they've received to their units? I think that's important information I'd like to see coming forward when we get these asks. Because if we have an operator and an owner that has multiple dozens, hundreds of calls, they have some history as to bylaw calls, I think that's an important tell to our relationship with that owner. And I'm wondering if we have any information with this owner.
Thank you, Counselors Zarikowski. Since I've taken over bylaw, we have not had any.
Sorry.
Quit shutting your light off. You're on the hot seat. Keep it on, please.
I have to get used to this as well.
I said I was done, so I apologize.
Thank you for the question, Counselors Zarikowski. Since I've taken over bylaw, I can confirm we haven't had any calls. But I can certainly do some homework. You know, we've got dozens and dozens of care homes throughout the city. I know police previously, previous bylaw did track calls to those areas in general and I can get those numbers, but in the last year, we have not.
I know there's a few owner-operators, their names will remain in the back of my head because I know that they're responsible for the unkept condition of their facilities and I think those are the ones that we need to red-flag when these asks come forward. So thank you for the answers and thank you to Chelsea and Matt for coming forward and sharing your concerns for the neighborhood. That's a really important part of the process.
Okay, any other comments from Counselors? I did see some of the lights on, but they must have heard the answer that they needed. Okay, with that, I'm gonna thank you for coming. I'm gonna disconnect you and I'm gonna call for the votes. So thank you and your husband for coming today and your presentation.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Your worship, I wonder if I might ask one last question while you're looking for the red, yellow, or blue button?
Go ahead.
How many people from the neighborhood attended the public meeting?
Go ahead. Thank you, Mayor. We sent out public notice to the public and members of council on June the tenth with ways to sign up for the meeting and attend the meeting and register for the meeting. That was done on June tenth, like I said. I believe at the actual meeting itself, it was hosted by our planning manager. It was not well-attended. I believe there was two residents there. Keeping in mind that most of that neighborhood, however, has not yet sold, so it's a little bit different. We also expanded our mail-out radius as well. So that's the first application that we've processed with our new public notice requirements.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Miller?
Yes, thank you. I know the Counselor had a question about, do we have multiple places like this on one street? We do. Seventeenth Avenue West has one right directly across the street from it. And so there's two. And then, not even a block away, there's another one on Mayor Drive, which is connected to Seventeenth Avenue West.
Thank you. Okay, with that, then, I see no more prompting, so I'm gonna prompt the question. Yes, it's motions on the board. Okay, the vote is now open. Counselor Zep?
No.
Oh. Okay. I voted wrong again.
That's why I said that.
How do I do? Sorry, everyone to revote. If you're in favor, it's to deny. If you're opposed, it's to approve. Okay, Counselor Zep?
No.
I caught it right. A motion's carried. The application is denied. Thank you. If the speakers would like to depart, if you could do that now. Otherwise, we have quite a long agenda and we don't like people coming and going to disturb our meeting. So thank you for coming. Okay, number ten, communications, we have none. So I'll move into reports. Eleven point one, development permit application for a licensed commercial entertainment establishment, two oh one Thirteenth Street East. Counselor Edwards?
Thank you, your worship. I will move the recommendation that the development permit application for an addition to the existing licensed commercial entertainment establishment located at two oh one Thirteenth Street East be approved subject to, one, the submission of a site plan that conforms to the city's zoning bylaw number one of 2019 for review and approval by administration.
Thank you. Counselor Head?
I'll second that motion. I'll have a comment as well.
Go ahead with your comment now that it's seconded.
Well, no, definitely, I see that there was an addition here and I mean, our city can use this addition to bring kids to the community and of course, the ones that currently live here. Quite excited to see this addition. I can't wait to see it come to fruition. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments? There are no, seeing none in the queue. I'll prompt the vote again. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. It passes unanimously. Eleven point two, implementation of plastic checkout bags bylaw. Counselor Cody?
Yes, your worship, I move that the suspension of section twelve of the city's plastic checkout bag bylaw number twenty-eight of 2020 be lifted effective October the twelfth, 2021 and that administration draft correspondence to inform Prince Albert retail businesses of the suspension being lifted.
Thank you. Seconder? Counselor Miller?
Yes, I will second, Mayor Dion. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion, if there's any. Counselor Edwards?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I just have, and I don't know whether anybody in this room can answer this, but I have a question about the cost of paper bags to the average business. And now, we're not implementing this bylaw so businesses can make money on the bags. And I'm seeing some pretty high costs on paper bags to people. And I'm just wondering if anybody has knowledge on costs of the paper bags that maybe we may be implementing to businesses versus plastic bags? I think plastic bags are about three cents a bag, maybe five cents, and typically, that's the charge for them.
Yes.
What about paper bags?
I think we'd have to do some research and get back to you.
Nobody has that information? So I'm hopeful that businesses don't take advantage of this and don't try and make fifteen cents a bag or whatever it might be. I'm really, I support this motion. I think we need to move forward with it, but I'm a little concerned that we may see that and I hope that's not the case.
Yes, and I know some stores are charging a little higher because they wanna encourage people to bring recyclable bags, but I think that'll come in time. But I will make some inquiries because we can actually ask the Retail Council of Canada for that information and they'll supply it to us. Okay? Counselor Miller?
Thank you, Mayor Dion. I do know that there's a store, Safeway, was charging twenty-five cents for a paper bag. So highly recommend bring your own bags because it's gonna cost you a lot of money.
Yes. Counselor Zarikowski?
Sure, thank you. On a more positive note, I think this is a great step forward. We know the cost of implementing and creating another selling or landfill. It's astronomical. It's six million dollars. It's just, we have to find another way of doing better moving forward. What's interesting about this is there are a number of municipalities across Saskatchewan. Regina in particular is looking at creating a similar bylaw and following our lead on this. So I think this is something that we're gonna see across Western Canada and it's time has come.
Well, I also think you're gonna see the federal government. They brought in a single use and that was spoons, forks, plastic bags. They soon, once all the provinces are reopened, will be bringing that legislation back to give a date when it'll start as well. So it's a thing of the future that landfills are just too expensive and they don't do it. So I'll prompt the question. Who, Counsel? You okay? Okay. You have to. Okay, the question is up. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
I voted, yeah. It's up now. And I got you, Counselor Zep. Thank you. I put my glasses on. Too small, we're hitting. Okay. We move to eleven point three, airfield electrical rehabilitation engineering. This is what we've gotta do. Because it's Claris, I can't see the screen. Okay, we'll figure that out. Can't see. I hit Counselor Cody. And so I hit the button again and it moved along. Counselor Cody?
Yes, your worship, this is a good move. I move that the professional services agreement for the airport electrical design, tender, and construction inspection for the Prince Albert Airport be awarded to Avia NG Inc. for an estimated cost of two hundred sixty-seven thousand four hundred eighty dollars and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement and any other applicable documents on behalf of the city once prepared.
Thank you. Seconder?
Counselor Head? Thank you, your worship. I'll second this motion and again, it's a hundred percent funded as well, so I'm happy to do that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll prompt the question. It's open. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. We move to another airport one, eleven point three, airfield electrical rehabilitation. What's Counselors wish? Counselor Head?
Thank you, your worship. That the professional services agreement for the maintenance facility renovations, tender, and construction inspection for the Prince Albert Airport be awarded to Remple Engineering and Management Limited for an estimated cost of twenty-nine thousand five hundred plus applicable taxes and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement and any other applicable documents on behalf of the city once.
Prepared.
Prepared. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second, Mayor Dion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll prompt the question. Questions open. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Eleven point four, airport maintenance facility renovation engineer services award. Fund it again. I'm at eleven point four. We did four, really? I'm sorry. Okay, we're moving to eleven point five, airport capital assistance program, airfield electrical. Counselor Bodnick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That the ACAP agreement between the city and the Federal Minister of Transport for funding the airfield electrical rehabilitation program in the amount of $3,211,844 be approved, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement and any other applicable documents on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Seconder. Counselor Edwards.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, prompted. Is that the question? Questions open, Counselor Zep.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. 5.6 Airport Capital Assistance Program, Airfield Drainage Improvements. Another ACAP agreement? Counsel Kilmer.
Thank you, your worship. I move that the ACAP agreement between the city and the Federal Minister of Transport for funding the Airport Drainage Improvement Program in the amount of $58,812 be approved, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement and any other applicable documents on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Counselor Bodnick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? I see no one in the queue. So I'll prompt the vote. Okay, the vote is open, Counselor Zep.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. 11.7 Seniors Residential Sidewalk Replacement Program. Counsel Kilmer.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to move that the senior residence sidewalk replacement program be established, and that the funding for the 2022 Senior Resident Sidewalk Replacement Program in the amount of $107,164 be forwarded for consideration during the 2022 budget deliberations.
Thank you. Seconder. Counselor Miller.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Dionne, I'll second it, and I have a question as well.
Go ahead.
So my question is, is this added to the one that's budgeted for the downtown replacement sidewalk program? Is that going to be added to this, or?
Director Public Service.
Thank you very much for the question. So, as you can see in the report, we have two capital programs. One is for capital construction of new sidewalks, when we're redoing roadways or water and sewer. And we also have one program for operations, and that covers all parts of the city wherever there's a broken sidewalk. We don't presently have any specific downtown sidewalk program. One was asked for in previous years, but not approved by city council in the budget.
Okay, so this one's just going to be added to, or is this going to be brand new?
It'll be brand new.
If passed by council during budget, it would be a brand-new program with an additional $107,000 in the total program, but it'll be up to council if they wish to do this over several-year program, as suggested in the report.
Right, thank you.
Okay, I have a question, Director, if you just stay there. So in the assisting program, we have some issues now in front of Caleb Village. Can that not be repaired this year? We did have a slip and fall there and an injury. Can that not be repaired under the assisting program? And that's for all operational sidewalks, instead of waiting for this one that is called senior replacement?
Thank you very much for that question. So, anything's possible. We would have to be moving that particular location up and removing a location that administration deemed as a worst-case scenario. So we have many, many locations that need to be addressed. Right now, we've allocated the entire fund for this year, but if council chose to pick something off this list, then something else would have to come off the list.
Thank you. Counselor Edwards.
Thank you, worship. I'm not going to support the motion. I feel like there was a motion previously about go and pick the sidewalks in your ward and figure out which ones need to be replaced, and it was a $100,000 budget. It was passed, but denied at budget. I feel like this is a similar ask, although I certainly want to protect the seniors, but $100,000, if we approve in the budget, $100,000, and there's some recommendations in there, but if we approve it, I feel like it's just going to be a funding model. It's not, it's going to be there, it's going to be part of our budget forever and ever, and I'm not supportive of that. I think we need to start looking at some of the needs, and yes, maybe there's two or three we need to do this year, and that could be a $34,000 or ask instead of $100,000, and again, there's recommendations, but I would like to see pictures. I would like to know the need that we're looking at and why, and we don't see that as part of this report. So I really believe that we should see a report that comes forward with that, and with asks that say, hey, you know what, we, these are degraded to the point where there's going to be trip and falls, and this street, this street, and this street, we would like this year in that budget. And that's why I'm not supporting this.
Okay, and a good point, because I brought up Caleb, she, there's a big, it's broken away, and she stepped in and fell, hit her head. So to me, that should be a priority. It's not a need, it's a priority. Counselor Zarikowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm excited about dedicating dollars towards sidewalk replacement in the areas that seniors live. The problem with the title of this report, I don't think it accomplishes it. It ignores the seniors that are living in their own homes, and it dedicates dollars elsewhere that are important as well. But I do think that we need a needs-based approach. I have a 93-year-old gentleman who still drives, good for him, but in front of his home, his bungalow, the sidewalk is below the level of the street. So every fall and every spring, no pun intended on the fall, it freezes and thaws and creates ice, and it's a hazard for him. And we can't get that fixed because we're not dedicating enough money towards that. So I agree with my colleague that we want to repair some of these sidewalks that need repairing on a needs-based approach. If there's a need in front of Caleb, let's get it fixed. If there's a need somewhere else in front of a senior's home down the street, in front of the home, that is drastically in need of repair, then let's fix that area of the sidewalk. If it's in front of a property from the Prince Albert Housing Authority, then let's get that fixed. But I think we need to have some analysis of what scale of needs we're talking about, because I don't want to surprise anybody, and I won't, but we have a number of active seniors living in, some of which are in this room, are living in their own home. So let's make sure, in my opinion, this is Ted talking, that's my opinion, let's approach, let's put these few dollars towards the greatest need. And I don't think this suggests the report gets us there.
Thank you. Counsel Kilmer.
Thank you, your worship. I agree with the counselor to my left that we do want to make sure that our dollars are spent where the greatest good and need are. What I do like about this report, and what I do like about the idea of this, is that we are looking at our most vulnerable people that are living in a unique, like, large group, in large groups. So they will be using their sidewalks, just like the, you know, I do agree, the single-user home. However, these people, they're multi-use, and I appreciate that our city take the time each year to really take a look, when they're looking at the priorities and how the priorities are set in the report, I appreciate that our city will look and prioritize the multi-residential areas and have money set aside for those, and hopefully, over time, you know, not as much money would have to be used each year. So I like the multi, the use that there, or the idea that we have a procedure and a or way of looking after all of our citizens with a plan. I like the plan idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bodnick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll weigh in on this as well. I like what I heard today, like, what I'm hearing from my fellow counselors is, we've got to use some common sense, and let's, you know, just get down to business here and get stuff done, and use common sense, and where a sidewalk needs it, let's do it, doesn't matter, you know, as long as we have that budget, and as Counselor Edwards said, like, we as counselors know our wards and know where there's a great need, and that's what we need to be doing, is we need to be informing Public Works of where there's potential for sidewalks to be replaced, and then based on the amount of dollar figures, then let's get her done. That's what I hear. I like this idea of this report that we directed, we directed admin to do this. We came up with a motion that, in front of senior care homes, so they went and did all this work, and now we're saying, we don't like it. You know what? Let's get our act together here, and let's move this forward. We could always look at budget, when it comes down to budget, it's going to be a tough budget, again, and we might not be able to afford all this. Or we might have to prioritize and say, you know what, it's more important to have good sidewalks than something else. Pay increases, or whatever, I don't want to say that, but, you know, something like that. So we have to, we asked admin to do this, let's pass this and move forward in our budget deliberations, and as I said, use common sense on how we're going to move this city forward in doing all these repairs that are needed around the city. And by the way, sidewalks on 12th Street is absolutely fantastic, the new ones. That project, that's costing $17,000 per household, $1.2 million for its 12th Street project, it is absolutely fantastic-looking, and so good job on Public Works, thank you.
Yes, and I agree with counselor. This budget coming forward, we think we had a tough one with COVID, no, it's after COVID, and the report will soon be coming to council. We will be losing quite a bit in revenue sharing, because revenue sharing is based on PST, and even though I thought there was more activity with renovations and COVID, but in eating out and other products like that were totally stopped, so the PST dropped, and so we're going to see a credit drop in revenue sharing. So we're going to go into this budget already in the hole, so it's very prudent that we look at the budget, even leading up to the budget, that we don't put too much on the plate when we know that we're not going to do it. And I see nobody else in the queue, so I'll prompt the vote.
Tara Lennox up here.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. So, yes, as Counselor Bodnick stated, we have, we as council did ask administration to prepare this report, and I'm hopeful that this report will make it along its way to budget deliberations. If we don't, if we stop the report as it is right now, then the report just gets shelved, and the work was, doesn't go any further. So at least, I think we should be considering this as part of our budget deliberations when considering priorities. I also agree that I do want to see more sidewalk repair for people who live in their homes as well, and that the individual that Counselor Zarikowski mentioned, and people like that, or anyone in our city, I think that we can add funds and hopefully can consider sidewalk repair across the board as well. But this report is really positive in looking at the larger, the buildings that house many of our seniors in one building at a time, on that chart. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, hearing none, I'll prompt the question. Counselor Zep.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion is carried. Okay, moving to 11.8 Beautification of City Entrance Ways. Counselor Bodnick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move that the 2021 focus areas for the beautification of city entrance ways be approved.
Thank you. Seconder. Counselor Head.
Thank your worship, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll prompt the question. Questions open, Counselor Zep.
Yes.
Was that you whining?
I don't think it's on my end.
Oh, we can hear it, thank you. It adds to our family atmosphere. Okay, motion is carried, I'll close. I'll move to 11.9 Walkway Closure Policy. Counselor Miller.
That the walkway closure policy be approved.
Thank you. Counsel Kilmer.
Thank you, worship, I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Counselor Edwards.
Thank your worship, I won't be supporting this motion, although I think it's probably going to pass. I think it deters people from bringing their concerns forward. I know walkways are certainly controversial, and I think that this is a way to put a muzzle on people, and I don't like it. And so I won't support it. I think the cost to apply is too much, and I think that people should have the right, which this does have the right, but you better have the dollars to come forward with your concern. So I won't support this.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor Zarikowski.
So I wonder if we can hear from administration what specifically has changed that's asking for approval today in the policy?
Go ahead, Director.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Counselor Zarikowski, for the question. We never had a formalized walkway closure policy that was approved by council, so I think the big thing that's changed is introducing some consistency. We've always dealt with walkways, a bit of a one-off or ad hoc basis, and I don't believe we're treated, I don't want to use the word fairly, but yes, consistently is what was lacking. The big change certainly was the application fee. We did that report back in March, I think, so $500, I realize that is a lot of money. Just a quick note, though, if, you know, after we do our detailed review, if the choice is to withdraw the application, that is $300 to be refunded to the applicant, so they're not stuck with that $500 bill regardless. So we also introduced a level of review by the Planning Advisory Committee, as requested by council, so that you know if you see the walkway closure application, it has been vetted appropriately, and it'll also be following our public notice bylaw as well that we amended. So those are the big changes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Zarikowski.
What other fee for service do we provide to the public? Not necessarily for contractors or businesses, but what other, when people walk up to the window and say, this is what I'd like to do, this is the process I'd like to initiate, what other fee for service, what else do we charge for? I think it's important for a comparable, because I see the $500 as, I'm asking myself, why? Should there be something? Sure. You don't want to be dealing with frivolous asks every second week, but why? I'm having trouble with $500, I just, I can't get my head around that. To me, I think it's too onerous, so I'm trying to get a comparable, I can't think of any other fee for service that we charge to our residents when they come in for an ask like this.
Thank you, Counselor Zarikowski, and that is a great question. Certainly, there is a line of where we provide that added value to our residents, and I understand that. The best comparison we have is for a The best comparison we have is for a development permit. Our development permit application cost is $500. We go through a similar review, actually quite more onerous than a development permit review. Included in a walkway closure, do keep in mind that there is a public meeting to be held at the site. There's also a walkway bylaw that has to be drafted by us and approved by city council, and also ministerial approval. So there's a number of processes in addition to what we would normally do for our development permit, which is also $500. So that's what we used as a guideline.
Thank you. Do we often have individual residents coming in to engage in a development permit? Is it mostly contractors, businesses? And I guess maybe I should have taken out a permit on my back deck, but I'm not sure if I could charge for that. So what's the moving forward? Is the focus on individual residents? Or is it a service we provide to businesses and contractors?
Thank you for the question. Just to clarify, yes, building permits, another example, where we do charge building permit fees, business licensing. Walkway closures are mostly in cases of residential property owners, but in some cases, they are commercial as well. I do want to clarify, though, that people are absolutely welcome to come into City Hall, sit down with me or my planning manager or one of our planners for an hour. We can go through the whole process, review some of the pros and cons and what they may be up against with a walkway closure, and give them a real good sense of whether it would be approved or not. In my experience, $500, and I don't want to sound like it's a minimal amount of money, because it is, you know, $500 is a lot of money. But people that end up moving ahead with the closure are very serious about it, and they're actually quite pleased to pay the $500 in the end. But I see your point. So they can absolutely come to us, and we can talk to them about as long as they want, and that is a free service.
Counselor Edwards?
Thank you, your worship. Just very quickly, I'm not against a walkway closure policy. I think we need it. I think the idea is good. There needs to be clarification on how you go about it. I just don't agree with the cost that's sitting there. And people that do end up closing a walkway face a substantial cost if they do get it approved. Couple of them have faced about a $10,000 cost. It's substantial, and most people don't want the extra property. And that's why, that's the concern that I have from residents that have talked about it, is the cost is substantial. That's what I'm against, and that's why I'm voting against the policy as it stands. Not that we don't need a process. We do need a process, and we need it better than it has been. No question about that, so.
Okay, thank you. No other questions? I'll get you, Director Killian, and then I'll prompt the question. Uh-oh. Abort, abort. What did I do now? I got three people to vote, and then I stopped them. There we go. I rejected it. So then, ready to vote? There we go. Okay, we're now open and ready to vote. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. I'll move to 1110, bylaw enforcement update. Counselor Miller?
Thanks, Mayor Dion. That bylaw number 13 of 2021 be approved for responsible pet ownership bylaw introduced and given three readings. And that bylaw number 14, 2021, to amend the properties amenities by law to introduce and give three readings.
Thank you. Secondary? Counsel Kilmer?
Thank you, your worship. I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Tara Lennox up.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm with the director. The proposed changes here, it looks like all of the proposed changes are simply to allow the new bylaw office, as it is structured, to be able to perform enforcement? Are there any other changes that I'm not, other than that?
Thank you, Counselor Lennox up for the question. And I must apologize. I could have done a better job in the report detailing exactly what those changes were. The lion's share of the changes were in the enforcement section, certainly. And also, the other change was in relation to officer. So there is a reference to officer throughout the document. So that gives our bylaw enforcement officer to issue tickets, and in some cases, potentially, our CSOs or even the SPCA. So those are the only changes that were made of substantial.
Thank you.
So then, once we pass this, they'll be able to start writing tickets?
Correct.
Thank you. Counselor Edwards?
Very quickly, thanks, your worship. I all support the motion, but what I don't like as part of the bylaw is the cost to license a pet. I think it's way too expensive. I think that we would see more of society registering their pet if our cost was not $30 a pet. I just think it's too much. So those are my two cents. I hope that we evaluate that down the line, because I think that the city could make more revenue if more people actually register their animals.
Okay, thank you. I'll prompt the question. Okay, the questions now open. Counselor Lennox up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Carried unanimously. City Clerk?
Mayor Dion, we now have bylaw number 13 of 2021 to regulate the conduct of pet owners in relation to the control of their pets. The bylaw is for three readings today.
Thank you. Counselor Miller?
That bylaw number 13 of 2021 be read, introduced and read a first time.
Thank you. Counsel Kilmer?
I'll second that.
Thank you. I'll prompt the question. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. Carries unanimously. Counselor Miller?
That bylaw number 13 of 2021 be read a second time.
Thank you. Counsel Kilmer?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Prompt the question. Voting's now open. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously again. Will accept. Counselor Miller?
That leave be granted to read bylaw number 13 of 2021 a third time.
Thank you. Counsel Kilmer?
Thank you, your worship. I second that.
Thank you. I'll prompt the question. Voting's now open. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Leave is granted. Counselor Miller?
That bylaw number 13 of 2021 be read a third time and passed, and that bylaw number 13 of 2021 now be adopted, sealed, signed by the mayor and city clerk.
Thank you. Counsel Kilmer?
Second that.
Second that? Okay, I'll prompt the question. Questions open. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. Carries again.
Mayor Dion, we now have bylaw number 14 of 2021 to amend the city's property amenities. Bylaw number 27 of 2020 to update the enforcement options. The bylaw is for three readings today.
Thank you. Counselor Miller?
That bylaw number 14 of 2021 be introduced a first time.
Thank you. Secondary? Counsel Kilmer?
Thank you, your worship. I'll second that.
Thank you. I'll prompt the question. Questions now open. Counselor Zep? Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. Carries unanimously. Accepted. Counselor Miller?
That bylaw number 14 of 2021 be read a second time.
Thank you. Counsel Kilmer?
I will second that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll prompt the question. Okay, it's now open. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. Carried again unanimously. Counselor Miller?
That leave be granted to read bylaw number 14 of 2021 a third time.
Thank you. Counsel Kilmer?
I'll second that.
Thank you. I'll prompt the question. It's now open. Counselor Zep?
I vote no. I need to make an amendment on this.
Okay, do you realize you can't make an amendment on leave? So leave is canceled, so it'll go to the next council for approval. So it'll be another month before we can write tickets, so we'll be on hold.
Can I just ask the chair? I thought that we had the Normandy Master Plan as this item. I'm just a bit confused on the agenda, that we're on a different item?
No, we're on bylaw enforcement. There was two bylaws that we approved, one for the dog and one for the tickets.
One for the dog and one for the tickets. I'm looking at bylaw number 14, which is the bicycle bylaw. I think I'm just on the wrong agenda item. So if I may, I would like to rescind my vote. And I have an amendment on the bicycle bylaw, which is two items from now.
Okay, thank you. So you're going to move, vote in favor of leave?
I am, yes, and I'll speak to the bicycle bylaw, which is two items from now later.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that carries. Leave is granted. Okay. Counselor Miller?
That bylaw number 14 of 2021 be read a third time and passed, and bylaw number 14 of 2021 now be adopted, sealed, signed by the mayor and city clerk.
Thank you. Counsel Kilmer?
I'll second that.
Thank you. I'll prompt the question. Okay, the questions now open. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried. So we'll move to 1111, cancellation of the Normandy Park Master Plan. Maybe what we'll do is I'll get the director. Oh, you ready?
I was going to move that motion.
Go ahead. Counselor Ed?
Thank you, your worship. I move that the administration discontinue utilizing and are implementing the Normandy Park Policy Statement that is outlined in the Committee of the Whole Council Resolution Number 59, dated February 17, 1970.
Thank you. Secondary? Counselor Bodnick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll prompt the question. Questions now open. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, now move to 1112, bike bylaw and traffic bylaw amendment. Before I go to you, we have a speaker. So I'll ask Roger Page to please go to the podium. Pagey? And I'm French. I should be able to say that. So just give me one minute. I got to prompt you. Fire up the thing. Pete? Welcome, Roger. You have five minutes to make your presentation.
Good afternoon, your worship, councilwomen, councilmen. I'm here to speak to you today about the amendment to the bike bylaw regarding a mandatory bell for cyclists. I would sooner see a broader education plan for all of the users on the rotary trail. I've ridden the streets of Prince Albert pretty much all of my life that have amounted to thousands of miles. And I'll tell you right now that that rotary trail is the safest trail pathway that I've ever ridden. And I've ridden Red Deer, Vancouver, Saskatoon. Our rotary trail is fantastic. It's my wish to see if we can get more public input, maybe from cyclists, the users, the skateboarders, the walkers, the dog walkers, those that choose to walk in packs of 12 that take up the whole rotary trail and force me off. It's important to me to see our community use the trail, but all of us use the trail and not one of us be lower than the other or be mandated to have a bell. I'm positive that Sheri has given you all the letter that I had handed in.
Yes.
I understand, I don't think that we need to spend any more money on the trail. I know I had mentioned maybe putting a dotted line or signage, but I think probably just education, just friendly education to everybody, you know? When you're on that trail, stay to the right. It's, you know, treat it as a roadway. You don't drive on the left side of the road unless you're passing somebody, which would be the exact thing I'm kind of aiming for. Are you aware that the only marked bicycle lane in Prince Albert actually started aiming for. Are you aware that the only marked bicycle lane in Prince Albert actually starts mid cornerstone area and ends just before Fifteenth Avenue on Fifteenth Street? You have to access that somehow. I mean, we're all kinda in this together, and I'd like to see us be able to use the rotary trail side by side with everybody else. You know, it's just education, I guess, is my main thing. It's not gonna cost us anything. I just, I would love to see us maybe talk to the community again to not just the squeaky wheel that complained that their dog got scared because somebody rode up behind them too quickly or whatever. You've got your iPods in or your AirPods in. You're not gonna hear, you're not gonna hear my bell. And I think our bylaw officers are plenty busy without having to chase down myself that didn't have a bell and scared Fifi. So that's my only gripe, really, which is hardly a gripe. And I will abide by the law if it is deemed that we are gonna have to have a bell. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all today.
No problem, Roger. But you realize it's a citywide bylaw. It's just not for the rotary trail. It's for citywide.
Oh, this is citywide?
Yeah, it's citywide. It encompasses the rotary trail as well, but it's citywide.
So, okay. And again, so going back, thank you, going back to my point. If the people that are concerned about me coming up behind them or any of the other cyclists in the room coming up behind them, if they're not gonna hear me, they're not gonna hear me, right? I think, again, education, I think, is probably key as opposed to just throwing one group under the, you know, under that law, right? Thank you for correcting me, though. I was unaware of that.
No problem. I just wanted to make sure that you understood because you kept referring to the rotary trail, which is probably the main one used, and I agree with you. It is a great asset to us.
Correct, yeah. And for everybody, right? I mean, wheelchairs, skateboarders, like I said, everybody. But, yeah, I think education, how to use the trail properly, if you have a dog, if you're walking, if you're jogging, if you're in a group en masse, you know, how can we be friendlier? How can we use that trail so that we can all benefit from its benefits, really?
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, guys.
Well, thank you for coming. Counsel Edwards?
Yeah, thanks, Roger, for coming out and presenting. Really appreciate that information. Some valid points from our guests. And one of them is the earbuds used by, holy man, almost every kid alive is using earbuds and can't hear a thing when they're on their scooter or their, whatever, their skateboard they might be on.
Yep.
So.
That's why when you approach them, you have to watch. I've even had them with headphones on. So I've had to go onto the grass because I know they can't hear me.
Yeah. So I would like to move the motion with some amendments.
Go ahead, sir.
And I'm also looking forward to the discussion to see if we're gonna make some further amendments. One, the bylaw number eleven of two thousand twenty-one be introduced and given three readings. Two, the bylaw number twelve of two thousand twenty-one be amended as follows: that section fourteen be removed in its entirety, and that all subsequent sections be renumbered consecutively, starting with number fourteen. And three, the bylaw number twelve of two thousand twenty-one, as amended, be given three readings.
Thank you.
And I'd like to talk on that once we get a second.
Seconder?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Counsel Edwards, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Dionne. So part of that motion takes out the dog on a leash, riding a bike with the dog on the leash. I think that we heard the public loud and clear. Many thought it was already approved. Thankfully, it wasn't, and we knew that. But it needs to be removed. I think that anytime we can get people out in this day and age, whether it's riding their bike with their dog on their bike or leashed to their bike, I think it's a positive thing for our community to get out and about. So I don't know where that actually came from initially, but maybe other cities have it. Prince Albert don't need, we don't need that bylaw as part of it. So I do have some concerns with the bell aspect of things, although it's gonna be difficult to enforce. I understand that. Not everybody's gonna comply. But I'm not sure, if I'm walking on the rotary trail, I wanna hear horns and bells every time someone's gonna pass me. You go out there for a peaceful walk and you have this horn, brrr brrr, every time you go. I don't know whether I wanna hear that. But I'm not sure whether we should move forward with the bell aspect of things, but I'm looking forward to some further conversation before we withdraw that part of things. Certainly, one of my colleagues did mention that it should say audible or bell, whether or not a horn, it opens it up to having something there. I think right now it just says bell, but there's signage, there's signs up already that says audible, which is a good idea. I'm not sure why the signs went up before the bylaw was passed, but they did. So that's everything for now.
Okay. And just so you know, I use my bell. I have a bell, and I get lots of thank yous because we have lots of seniors, lots of ladies with baby carriage pushing them along, and they hear me coming, they'll actually stop and move over and let you pass, and they say thank you. So I do support that. But we'll look at down the road if it should be audible because I've seen one pass me the other day that was kind of funny. He had one of those, is that you squeeze, doot doot? I thought it was kinda cute. But I haven't seen those sold for a long time. It's pretty well, and when I was in the bike shop, it was bells. And it is almost in every bylaw that we did look at. So Counsel Zarikowski?
Thank you. I'm gonna start with Roger. Thank you for coming and speaking on your passion. I brought up some really good points, and I don't wanna lose those points moving forward. I think there's a lot in there. I think what you brought up, I think we need to find a way to forward in, in that education piece. I like some of your ideas. I always thought the dotted line down the middle of the path would appear one day, and I'm not sure if that is or not. I think both things can be true, the things that you've brought up here, and some of the important elements that are in this bylaw, such as the bell. I'm thinking of the first phone call I took, I think it was probably early this spring. One older lady gave me a call and said she was brushed by a bike on the way by.
Yeah.
I have an idea of where you're coming from and your perspective on all it takes is education, but sometimes that education is enforcement, too. I remember when parking in a handicap stall used to cost people twenty-five dollars. We did all the education we could for two years, and then we increased the fine to three hundred. But guess what? Nobody parks in a handicap stall anymore.
No.
Well, they do, but not as much. And so I don't wanna lose those educational pieces that you talked about. So I have a question for administration. Do we have a plan moving forward insofar as the educational component of the proper use of specifically the rotary trail in itself?
Who wants to talk about that? Well, they talk about that. I'll just let you know, Counsel Zarikowski, I've used my commercial now three times for four minutes. We sit on the rotary trail and we do, we did do education about passing on the right to be respectful, letting the person know. We'll continue that, but I have had communications with communications manager, but I see she's not here. So we'll see if one of the directors can add to what they're doing.
So I'm just wondering if we need to ask administration to come up with a plan?
Yeah.
For proper use of the rotary trail, or if there's something in the works now that's coming forward?
I did do that. Oh, no, you aren't, everybody. Well, you can leave them all armed. They know they aren't. They know they won't talk. Counsel Kilmer, you'll have to hit your light again. Go ahead, Counsel. Oh, sorry. Director, answer Counsel's question, please.
Okay, thank you very much. And I think the Director of Community Services would also like to chip in on this one. So from my perspective, I can state that I know during COVID-19, communications did put out several media notices to tell people to keep their social distancing on the rotary trail, but also to keep to the right of the trail, just like as you drive. The community services have just recently put up several new signages, and those signs relay the rules of the road, meaning the trail. So Jody can speak to that. And I can also talk to the painting of the lines on the trail. We did look at that as an option, but there's a cost. It'll cost about nine thousand dollars to paint the line, and then there would be annual maintenance of that line. So presently, we've never considered actually putting the line in due to the fact that the numbers of patrons haven't reached that level where we think that it would be necessary, you know, say considering like downtown Saskatoon, their trail there where they painted the line, but they're talking thousands of users a day where ours are in the hundreds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Director, Community Services? No, you can leave it on, Don. Just don't talk. Sorry. Go ahead, Director.
Thank you, Mayor Dionne, to Counsel Zarikowski's inquiry. So Wes did mention the new signs that we have put up. There's five in total that are within a new kiosk along the trail. They have, I believe, referred to as rotary trail etiquette, I'm sorry. And through there, it speaks to some of these concepts being built into that. I was just quickly looking as well on our website as the question was coming up. We do have to update the map, I see, to the current ones that are displayed, and making sure that those rotary trail, you know, whether they're rules of etiquette or just rules in general, are on that location. There was probably, I think, throughout the season as well, not just the summer season, but throughout the year, times where we can engage our social media channels to, maybe there's key highlights that we want to address, or maybe we're hearing concerns from the community or from counselors that you're hearing in your ward that we can maybe pick up on, and seems to be something that needs to be addressed in the community. We can use some of those channels to address that through the Communications Department. So some of it we have paid attention to in the past year. And then unfortunately, with the COVID situation last year, it did provide us, one of the benefits was it provided us with an opportunity to revisit all of those different rules of etiquette. And we were, of course, wanting people to make sure they were distancing themselves on the trail. As of yesterday, now getting back to more a general use of that trail, we can revisit all of these different concepts. So I think there is some value in this discussion. I think we've made some small strides in the direction, but there's probably some more to go as we hear some of those ideas.
Yeah, and thank you for that, Directors. What I'm hearing is through the efforts, the individual efforts of administration, things are being done, but it's a bit of an ad hoc approach without a real communication plan moving forward. And I don't wanna offend anybody, but putting out a press release is probably not the most effective way to reach our residents. And I know it's the minimum amount we can do, but I'm hearing that maybe we need to chat about a real communication plan. And knowing that our communication plan as a corporation has expired over a year ago, I think it's time to revisit specifically about this issue we're talking today. I wanna pause on the bell and section fourteen. The bell, to me, is a bit of a meh, sort of an issue. I've learned that because I run, I know I don't look like a runner, but because I run the rotary trail, I get passed a lot, but.
I've witnessed it.
The bell, yeah, I've heard it before. Thank you for the.
Very colorful runner.
Yeah. The, there is value in that because I do get woken up by the bell. And I have seen an increased etiquette by regular users of the rotary trail, on your left, on your left, on your left. Or sometimes I'm like, what? What? What is that? And then I hear the bell. I'm like, okay, now I recognize the bell. So when we talk about an audible device or a bell, that consistency in the bell, to me, when you've got maybe a second and a half to react, is important to me because I do cut the corners on the trail, making that left-hand turn all the time. I do. Also, when I take my feet to Saskatoon on the Me Watson Trail, to me, that bell from the people passing me, because it is more actively used in Saskatoon, and we're getting there, that has probably saved somebody's life a couple of times when I hear that bell, especially in downtown Corneitha Bridges. So it's not a hill to die on for me, but I can see the safety value in the bell. And by the way, that's already existed in the bylaw previously. On the issue of the having your dog on a leash while you're biking, a bell rang for me at the last executive meeting earlier. To me, that was a bit of an oddity. And maybe that's the way municipalities go about it with the leash, but we've survived three labs. Currently, we have a husky and a pug. I'm not gonna take my pug on a leash with the bike, but I've done that for three of our labs and my husky dog. That's the way we go. We go on the trail, and he's on leash, and away we go. And we go through the parks and the streets and the rotary trail that way. So I'd like to think that we're still small enough and community-minded enough to say, you know, I know the big cities do that, but here in Prince Albert, I think that section fourteen, we'd be better served to have that removed. That if we feel common sense is we take our dog on a run, and he or she is leashed in a safe way, well, you'll find out the first time whether you're gonna go the second time with that leash on the dog. So I'm in favor of removing section fourteen.
Counsel Kilmer?
Thank you, Your Worship. I, too, agree with removing section fourteen in its entirety, but I would also like us to consider adding the audible, maintaining that part of the current bylaw of the bells and use of audible. Again, because it's about teaching and proper etiquette on the trail, I don't want to be surprised on the trail, and I have been surprised by people using bicycles that do not have the bell and do not bother to say that they're coming up, on your left, on your left. But I have had the pleasure of people who do have and use proper etiquette, and it does not jar me versus, you know, a bell versus someone saying that. There's no difference, in my opinion. Just because we have, as part of the equipment, a bell, doesn't mean that people are going to use the bell. So I do think that we are putting in part of a bylaw that makes it seem that we are doing something different by removing the audible. So I would really, would like us to consider adding the word audibles.
Okay, the reason that we didn't, it's just what Ted said. You go to Saskatoon, you hear a bell. I went to Regina, you hear a bell. And the bell is the signal. And so I wouldn't wanna hear doot doot, because I'd go, what's that? You know? But it's worth looking at, and we can test it and see how people react to the bell. But the reason we picked the bell, every bylaw says a bell. No one has audible. And lots of times, I'll see people with iPods, and I will yell, coming by on the right, and they'll look up because they don't hear my bell. Yeah. Yeah. But voice, it's the same as a bell. Okay, any other discussion?
Tara Lennox App.
Oh, go, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. I support the idea of removing section fourteen regarding leashed animals. And I just bring up the issue that I have brought up at previous meetings, the issue of being required to have a serial number on your bicycle. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Edwards? I don't agree.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Your Worship. So as Counselor Kilmer was saying, audible or bell. I got concerns with the bell. I really do. If people get, if people, if we really actually are gonna enforce this, if there's enough complaints that there's a bell, I've talked to numerous teenage boys that ride this, that ride the rotary trail in particularly two or three times a day, have said, I'm not putting a bell on. It's not cool. It reminds you of the old Kermit the Frog with the basket, and everybody's okay there. And that's the concern for the athletes that are, you know, that are out there and they're using it, and they're like. They're not the only people out there. I like the idea. I didn't mind the bell when I actually was walking on the trail where you heard it, but I don't mind the idea of audible or bell. If you yell and say, hey, I'm on the left, what's wrong with that?
Yeah, but to yell, I don't. Yeah, but to yell, I don't think you have to put it in a bylaw. You know? I think that's disrespectful. I don't think you have to put that, but it's up to you.
Yeah, well, we can revisit this, I guess, down the road.
Kate, I'm going to prompt a question. I'm going to prompt a question. Kate, the question is open. Counselor Zep?
No.
Okay, the motion carries eight to one. City Clerk?
Mayor Dionne, we now have bylaw number 11 of 2021 to amend the city's traffic bylaw number 35 of 2022 to remove the bicycle usage sections and refer to the city's bicycle bylaw. The bylaws for three readings today.
Thank you. Counselor Edwards?
Also move that bylaw number 11 of 2021 be introduced and read a first time.
Is he required to say it's amended or did we amend it already?
That's bylaw 12. That's bylaw 12? That'll come after we finish bylaw 11.
Oh, so there's two bylaws we have to pass. Okay, sorry. I just wanted to make sure your amendment got in. Okay. Seconder? Yeah, we're confused because on here it just shows one bike bylaw. So we're confused.
There are two bylaws for consideration. In your first motion, Counselor, Counselor Edwards, bylaw 11 is to amend the traffic bylaw to remove the bicycle section out of the traffic bylaw for reference to the bicycle bylaw. So they weren't in two spots. Bylaw 12 is the bicycle bylaw that you're speaking of.
Okay, so we'll get, you'll second it then? Thank you. So the bylaw that we're speaking on now is just to delete it out of the traffic bylaw. Then the next bylaw that we're going to talk about is making the new bike law by itself. Kate, so I'm prompting the question so everyone understands. Okay, it's open. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Kate, passes unanimously. City Clerk? Oh, sorry. It's me, I've got to keep going. Second reading. Counselor Edwards?
Thank you. I still move that bylaw number 11 of 2021 be read a second time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
I'll prompt the question. Getting rid of the traffic bylaw. Okay, Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Gary. Counselor Edwards?
Also move that leave be granted to read bylaw number 11 of 2021 a third time.
Thank you. Seconded. Counselor Zierkowski?
Seconded.
Thank you. I'll prompt the question. Questions now open. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Gary. There we go. Counselor Edwards?
Also move the bylaw number 11 of 2021 be read a third time and passed, and that bylaw number 11 of 2021 be now adopted, sealed, and signed by the mayor and city clerk.
Thank you. Seconder? Thank you, Counselor Zierkowski. Prompt the final vote on this bylaw. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. City Clerk?
Mayor Dionne, we now have bylaw number 12 of 2021 to regulate the operation of all bicycles upon or in the streets, sidewalks, trails, shared use spaces, parks, and other public places in the city. The bylaw is first reading, amendment, second, and third reading tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Edwards?
Also move that bylaw number 12 of 2021 be introduced and read a first time.
Thank you. Counselor Zierkowski?
Seconded.
Thank you. So I'll prompt the question. This is now on the bike bylaw. And it's now open. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. It passes unanimously. I'll accept it. Counselor Edwards?
Also move that bylaw number 12 of 2021 be amended as follows. One, that Section 14 be removed in its entirety. And two, that all subsequent sections be renumbered consecutively, starting with number 14.
Thank you. Counselor Zierkowski? Thank you. Seconded it. Okay, I'll prompt the question. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. Passed unanimously. Counselor Edwards?
Also move that bylaw number 12 of 2021, as amended, be read a second time.
Thank you. Counselor Zierkowski?
Seconded.
Thank you. I'm prompting the question. It's now open. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. Passed unanimously. Counselor Edwards?
Also move that leave be granted to read bylaw number 12.
Yep, sorry.
Okay. Also move that leave be granted to read bylaw number 12 of 2021, as amended, a third time.
Thank you. Counselor Zierkowski?
Seconded.
Thank you. I'll prompt the question. Okay, vote is now open. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Thank you. Passed unanimously. Counselor Edwards?
Also move that bylaw number 12 of 2021, as amended, be read a third time and passed, and that bylaw number 12 of 2021 be now adopted, sealed, and signed by the mayor and city clerk.
Thank you. Counselor Zierkowski?
Seconded.
Thank you. For the final vote, I'll prompt the question. Questions now open. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
Carried unanimously. Bylaws carried. Okay, so I'll move to, we have no unfinished business? Okay, sorry. Counselor Zierkowski?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I have another motion related to this item. I move for your council's consideration that administration develop an education/communication plan for the proper use of the Rotary Trail.
Should it say, just for the bike bylaw?
So I'm going to chunk this in a small piece, be successful there.
And then spread it.
Okay, that's my intent.
Okay, can you just reread it? Sorry.
That administration develop an education/communication plan for the proper use of the Rotary Trail. Develop an education/communication plan for the proper use of the Rotary Trail.
Perfect. Seconder? Counselor Edwards?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Thank you. I know administration is some, does some great work on this already, moving forward, but I think it's, it's a bit more of a plan. And I was tempted to create a communication plan for this bylaw, but I think I'd like to chunk this out because people are talking about the Rotary Trail and then let's get a win here and see what flows out. And then if it leaks over to the bylaw, the bicycle bylaw, all the better.
And I think it will because if you ride the Rotary Trail, you ride the streets and everywhere else. So I will be supporting this. I think it's a good idea that we coordinate it together instead of my office doing something, Director doing something, the communications director, that we do it together. Okay. Oh. How do I prompt the question? Oh, but can I use one of the other ones that I didn't use? I didn't use a couple. I don't know how I got the vote, but it worked. Oh, you got it open? I've got it. Voting is now open for the communications plan. Counselor Zep?
Yes.
It passes unanimously. Thank you. So I'll accept the vote. Okay, and I'll continue down the agenda. Thank you, Roger, again for coming for your presentation and your knowledge. Number 12, unfinished business? We have none. Counselors and, Mayor and Counselors' forum. Counselor Head?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm going to take a few minutes, so if you could bear with me. I definitely want to share a statement today. And I have my father here in attendance with me today, so... So I've been a student of history of my people for some time. I've even taught that history to Cubi members of my work life. I am by no means a scholar, but I was keenly aware of Canada's treatment of my people. But still, I was as shocked as anyone by the number of graves discovered at the schools Canada established in an effort to eradicate our indigenous population, our languages, our customs, traditions, and culture. I hear about all these sad and tragic findings. I watch communities coming together to lower flags, to cancel Canada Day, to mourn, but none of that achieves any real change in the lives of those that were harmed. When I say those harmed, I want you to understand that every single indigenous person in this country bears the scars of what the government did. Every single one. In this chamber, we have an obligation to do much more than hold a moment in silence. I would say that continued silence from our elected leaders is quite literally killing my people. I bet if we go outside right now, we'll be able to find a homeless and indigenous person struggling with addiction, homelessness, hunger, and disease. How many times in a day do you think such a person gets belittled, stepped around, ignored, demeaned, yelled at, or even attacked? And we talk about addicts and addictions. There are not addicts and addictions. There are good people in horrific situations. They're the broken children of a broken people getting blamed for not getting up and fixing themselves up while living in a system that actively, violently broke them and now pretends it's all fixed. I know that no one here is responsible for the residential schools and six or sixty scoops. I know that some good things happen in Prince Albert here, such as Cree language being taught in a JD's elementary school. We watch vigils on the steps of City Hall. The PA Grand Council has held healing circles. The Peter Ballantyne First Nation has welcomed everyone in their vaccination clinics. Land recognition is a commonplace. Just last week, we spent two days recognizing and mourning missing and murdered indigenous women and girls. Missing and murdered indigenous women and girls, a phrase we all know, but what has it done in your lives? Those of you who are not indigenous. I'll tell you what it's done in mine. My three daughters have never taken a school bus because I'm afraid to allow them to stand anywhere waiting alone. My wife and my daughters walk, never walk alone after dusk, never mind after dark. Even in broad daylight, when my daughters walk to the corner store, I stand in the street and watch. From the moment they disappear, from the moment they disappear from view until I see them again, my heart pounds just a little bit harder. Watching my brilliant, wonderful, accomplished elder daughter, eldest daughter, becoming an adult and walking through this world of her own fills me with pride, but also incredible amount of fear. Fear no parent should have to live with. And there are thousands of stolen indigenous children buried on the grounds of our so-called schools. There aren't any words. I want to recognize a number of people doing walks in honor of those children. Elderly people are marching down our highways because the pain they are suffering now is too much to bear. Our community here in Prince Albert is more than 40% indigenous. To say nothing here, to do nothing here, is to participate in the harm. None of us in this room can imagine government or church representatives of respected institutions coming into our homes to steal our children while police officers hold us back. That's what happened to my dad. He was taken during a sixty scoop and he rarely speaks of it. He can't say much because it was too much for a child to endure, because it was impossible to understand, because the harm done, done to him never ends. But the harm must end, and it's up to us to end it. In 2015, after completion of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, 94 calls to action were published. Before every city council meeting, I read hundreds of pages of reports and proposals and submissions and various other documents, but never in my eight years, eight months as a city councillor, have I read a report on where we, where the city is on their work at any of those calls to action. As an indigenous person living in this city, I can promise you, I have not noticed a single change in my life or the lives of my friends or family since then. Here's a list of reports I would like to read, a couple. Call to action number 43 asks that all levels of government, including municipal, fully adopt and implement the United Nations Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous Peoples as a framework for reconciliation. What have we done? Call number 47 asks that all levels of government, including municipal, repudiate concepts used to justify European sovereignty over indigenous peoples and lands such as the Doctrine of Discovery and Terra Nulius, and to reform those laws, government policies, and litigation strategies that continue to rely on such concepts. Have we looked at our bylaws and policies and assessed them through this list? Have we done anything with this call to action? Call number 57 asks that all levels of government, including municipal, to provide education to public servants on the history of Aboriginal peoples, including the history and legacy of residential schools, the United Nations Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, treaties and Aboriginal rights, indigenous law, and Aboriginal Crown relations. This will require skills-based training in intercultural competency, conflict resolution, human rights, and anti-racism. Has any training of this nature been considered or better yet implemented? Call number 75 asks for the federal government to work with the provincial territory and municipal governments, churches, Aboriginal communities, former residential school students, and current landowners to develop and implement strategies and procedures for the ongoing identification, documentation, maintenance, commemoration, and protection of residential school cemeteries or other sites at which residential schools' children were buried. This is to include the provision of appropriate memorial ceremonies and commemorative markers to honor the deceased children. We have a residential school here in Prince Albert. What has been done? Call to action number 77 asks that all levels of government, including municipal and community archives, to work collaboratively with the National Center for Truth and Reconciliation to identify and collect copies of all records relevant to the history and legacy of the residential school system, and to provide these to the National Center for Truth and Reconciliation. Has the city of Prince Albert reached out to the National Center for Truth and Reconciliation to start this process? I hear the words "truth and reconciliation" often, but without actual action. Without honest intention to reconcile with the people of this land that has been so horrendous... Without honest intention to reconcile with the people of this land that has been so horrendously treated for so long, reconciliation can't happen. City Hall is remarkably silent. We've allowed shoes on our steps. We've lowered the flag and we've held a minute of silence. But I have to tell you, even a huge project on the hills is a disappointment to me. It will not serve people who need services. The kids in Midtown living in poverty who need services and outlets won't be able to get there. They will be excluded like they have always been excluded. After last Wednesday's unveiling of the monument to honor the thousand missing and murdered indigenous women and girls, I read a post on Facebook from a man angry because according to him, indigenous people are tearing down his monuments and then building their own. I'm sure there are a few others in this community that share that opinion. What he doesn't understand, what many of them need to realize and accept is that we are tearing down monuments that celebrate the architects of genocide and putting on monuments honoring their victims. We are righting a wrong in the only way we can, with honor and dignity and without the violence that has for so long been perpetuated against us. But for reconciliation to happen, you need to, we need to accept the truths of our stories. The truth that all systems that make up this country we all want to be proud of are rigged against us, and the truth that racism is alive and shamefully well here in our little gateway to the north. Only then can we all truly work towards fixing what's broken and becoming one people. None of us here and now are responsible for what happened in the past, but if we do nothing, if we allow this suffering to continue, if we allow the damage to fester, twenty years from now, we'll be the ones responsible. I cannot and will not be a part of that. We need to do better. We need to be a part of the solution, but a real one, no more tokens. Thoughts and prayers don't build pipelines for clean water. They don't feed the hungry and they don't build homes for the homeless. Neither do monuments or flags at half-mast or moments of silence. I do understand and appreciate those sentiments, but only if they mean that our community has collectively decided that enough is enough. I only appreciate those sentiments that bring about, if they bring about actual plans, real actions, real changes that improves the lives of our indigenous people in this, in this community. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I, and I will supply a report because we have been working on the truth and reconciliations, but I will get a report for council. You're welcome. Councilor Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Dion. In light of all this, uh, I did bring greetings on behalf of the city and, uh, on the twenty-ninth to the vigil of two hundred and nineteen children and also the five hundred and seventy-one. It was a difficult day and I made through it and, uh, but it was, it was tough. I'm not gonna say I didn't cry because I did. Councilor O'Rourke was with me that day and I really appreciate, um, you being in attendance with me. And I also would like to thank Cheryl Kimberly and the Women's Commission for their outstanding two days of the unveiling of the monuments and the events at Kinsman Park and the walk of, um, missing and murdered Aboriginal girls, boys, and children. And, um, yeah, it was, it was a, a good celebration up at the park. A very emotional time when, when it got, the monument got unveiled. And, um, yeah, on a lighter note, um, so I'm going to have a, a party in the park at, um, the Lions Park on Friday and I welcome everybody to come. And we're going to celebrate the reopening of Saskatchewan. And we're gonna have hot dogs and we're going to, um, celebrate with the kids in the community and we're gonna have watermelon as well. I invite everybody to come and, uh, have a good day.
Thank you. Councilor Brodnik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, I have a couple of things that I wanted to say. I just do want to respond. I've been silent. Doesn't mean that I don't care. My silence is part of the truth of the truth and reconciliation. My silence has been to listen. To listen to the, and that's why I attended the vigil, to listen to you, uh, Councilor Head, to listen to all the victims and keep my mouth shut and not offer an opinion. That's, that's what I've been doing. So I'm here to listen, acknowledge, and admit and say, yes, this happened. That's the truth part of the truth and reconciliation. And then work with our indigenous people to say, how now can we reconcile this truth? That's, that's how I'm approaching this. I've been very silent on Facebook and people have been sending me, my former students, Mr. O, why are you not saying anything? And I just said, because you need to shut up and you need to listen to the pain, the suffering, the horror stories and et cetera. So, so that's, that's what I've been doing. And, and, um, and the thing that I heard, the most powerful thing that I heard was from, uh, Vice Chief, I think it's Vice Chief Tassani, who said, "All indigenous people want is two things. One is to implement the ninety-four recommendations in the truth and reconciliation call to action, and the second is to honor the treaties." That's how simple that is. And if we can get there, and we have to ignore the bigots. I do challenge the bigoted comments. Like just, you got two ears, you got one mouth, start listening and, 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 you know, and just do that. So I, I needed to say that today and I thank you, Councilor Head, for your comments, um, today. It needed to be said and it, it, um, it made some of us, yeah, a little bit uncomfortable because we haven't done enough, but I think we are here to listen. Um, and, and that's, that's what I wanted to do. That being said, I, I did also want to, to thank the committee, um, the Women's Committee that, um, that was responsible for the monument. Prince Albert, you know, the Cree word, I think it's kistapananic, it's the gathering place. That's what Prince Albert was, a gathering place for thousands and thousands of years on this northern river, this mighty northern river. Gathering for trade, for, for, uh, celebration, for marriage, et cetera. And it was brilliant, stunning that this commission that, that, and I don't know who they are, but whoever, I know Cheryl was part of it.
Prince Albert Grand Council's Women's Commission.
Women's Commission. It was brilliant, the placement, the design of that monument to make every single one of us as we walk by that gathering place, along the gathering place, to commemorate, to remember, and not ignore the thousands of missing and murdered indigenous, indigenous women and children. So I want to thank that, uh, Prince Albert Grand Council Women's Commission for, for establishing that along, um, the banks of our beautiful river. Another thank you I want to give is to our, um, healthcare workers, administration, city employees who all worked through this pandemic. It's not over. But, but have, have, have struggled to come up with a safe way of, um, of having us enjoy our civic facilities. Jody and his department and, and all the employees that had to implement and had to, to practice those safe procedures so that we could still enjoy our facilities. And then, of course, our healthcare workers right from, you know, kitchen staff all the way to the ER doctors who have, uh, have given so much time, so much energy, and so much of themselves to, to, um, deal with this particular thing. So a big, huge thank you, uh, to, to those people as well. So that's all I have to say today, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I see nobody else in the queue, so I'll take over.
Tara Lennox-Ep as well, please.
Oh, you go ahead and then I'll end. Go ahead, Councilor Zep.
Thank you very much. I wanted to acknowledge and thank Councilor Head for his words. Uh, they are very powerful and meaningful. We, as a city, uh, I think that we, we must, uh, move forward in a, uh, in making improvements, uh, in, in the ways that, that he is describing. Uh, I also wanted to thank the Prince Albert Grand Council Women's Commission, uh, for their work with the monument and also the walk for murdered and missing indigenous women and girls. And, uh, and we as a, a city, I think we, we really do need to, to make improvements, uh, in, in these ways. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. So first of all, on the opening of the monument and the march, the biggest key I think is we can do as non-Aboriginal people is do what Dennis O'Rourke did, listen. I was very pleased when I spoke at the monument that I was part of the Women's Commission. I was an advisor to the monument and the things that I learned from the families. The pain and the suffering, knowing, you know, that you don't know. And I think that was the biggest thing. And I do want to reach out to my three female councillors. Councilor Kilmer, Councilor Miller, and Councilor Zep. They joined me at the monument. And that was powerful because being the Women's Commission. So for that, I want to thank you because that was half a day. Uh, it's a, a time commitment. And then with the march. But then I also want to share to you where I was, uh, for most of the morning. I started at eight o'clock and I ended just before one to get to council. And, uh, a part of our history, uh, Sturgeon Lake started an Angel event. And it was impressive to watch fifteen canoes with young Aboriginal men and women in it leave, uh, and come down the Shell River into the Saskatchewan River and paddle. And we met them at the boat launch and we had speeches and we gave them lunch. And one thing that I was impressed with is that the RCMP were there with their canoe and it was gonna travel because they realized that's part of reconciliation and they were gonna travel all the way. And they left today at noon and they'll be camping tonight at Cecil Ferry. So I think it's important as non-Aboriginal people, when we have these events, to join in and to listen. And I think, uh, they echoed some of my comments that always say, my grandfather taught me a very good lesson. Greg, you have to know where you're coming from before you know where you're going. And I think that's all they want. They want people to realize what happened and they acknowledge it wasn't us, but it's us that can make a difference. And I think that's important. So thank you for that, Councilor Head. Okay, with that, I'm gonna move on to inquiries. So I have one. Oh, I'll let Councilor Edwards, go ahead. Councilor Edwards.
Thank you, your worship. I think this one probably can be answered tonight, but, uh, the, the bump on Fifteenth Avenue by Holy Cross, it's, it was that gigantic speed bump there, uh, all winter. But it's leaking water now, so I'm assuming there's a problem there. I, I, I don't know where the water's coming from, but obviously from under the road. Are we looking to correct that sometime soon?
Go ahead, Director. I actually got disbriefed on it by the roads manager, so we'll see what the Director says.
So the plan is to dig that out and remove the frost boil. If there's some moisture leaking through the asphalt, now that's probably the very end of the frost boil that would have defrosted through the month of June. But we'll be digging it down and replacing it with base gravel so that it doesn't return in the future year.
Exactly what the Director said. What, he, he calls it leaking, that it's the final moisture. That's what caused the boil, was the moisture, and it must have been a pile because it's been leaking for about a month. But he said he, he wasn't gonna put a backhoe into it yet because he still wanted the process to dry. Okay, so I'm actually gonna take on the fire chief. I just don't understand and we harassed him. Quite a few people did, so if he doesn't do it, I'm gonna make a notice of motion. I'm just surprised that we don't have a fire ban at the Little Red. Uh, the national park, there's a fire ban. You can't even use your Coleman stove. Every provincial park and Crown land has. Oh, sorry, has fire bans. The RM of Prince Albert has a fire ban. The RM of Buckland that surrounds the Little Red River Park has a fire ban. And I just don't understand why, chief, we don't have a fire ban on the Little Red. I'm willing to give up my cooking of my hot dogs to save the forest. I have heard the excuse, and so I'm gonna challenge the, the fire chief. I've heard the excuse that we don't put it on because we monitor moisture, uh, humidity, and the humidity's at fifty-one. So are you telling me when the humidity's at fifty-one that the forest will not start on fire? I can throw my cigarette butt in there and it won't start on fire? Or the ambros, the two-by-fours that I was burning in the fire pit that was sparking all over the place, gave us a growl sound, will not start the forest on fire? I am telling, I'm requesting that you put a fire ban on strictly this week after tomorrow. We're supposed to heat up to thirty-five and there's no moisture in the air for thirty-five, for about ten days. That we're going up to thirty-five, we're gonna have the stream heat. And every dry time I drive by there, I think of the Cloverdale Fire. And we're not done. That Little Red and that area in Buckland, around the Little Red is just a matchbox waiting to happen. So if you can ask me, what do we do to get a fire ban? When will a fire ban go on? And my other question is, I really thought it was the authority of the parks manager because it's our park in the Little Red, but then it was passed to the fire chief. And I know the fire chief doesn't want to be working for fifty hours putting out a fire again. So if I could just ask, when are we gonna get a fire ban on the Little Red? Andy, even armed your mic.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, there's a lot there, but I'll do my best to answer. And if you, if I don't clarify in my statement, please ask again. Yes, no, absolutely. If it's the wish of council, um, to put on a fire ban, absolutely no problem. But to explain myself why we did not put on a fire ban for specifically the Little Red River Park is that we have resources available to us that are not available within what you named the rural municipality, even the provincial government. Uh, we have a fully staffed fire department. We've implemented, uh, four checks a day. Nine AM, twelve PM, being your lunch break. Um, six PM, supper time, and nine PM in the evening. We're talking roughly, I don't have the number, Community Services could probably provide it, but we're talking thirty, less than thirty fire pits that meet our bylaw, which is three meters of clearance, which other municipalities don't have. So within the tools available to me as fire chief, the bylaw being met and our regular checks, um, it's not just the humidity level. And yes, I do understand, Mayor, that, uh, it's a very volatile situation. But I do consider, um, with our resources, with the implemented checks, with bylaw and the approved fire pits, that it is a, it's an acceptable practice to have fires in the Little Red River Park. In saying that, if it's the wish of council, um, absolutely.
Well, well, I'm into preventative maintenance and I understand where you're coming from. You know, we have the clearing, you know, but the problem is, why take the risk? And I understand Buckland and the surrounding areas, they have a time to respond, hard to respond, but.
Yeah, and if I could respond to that, Mayor, um, the risk, um, with Inisit Forest being, you know, a hundred-year-plus, I'd have to have, uh, our tree manager, Tim Naaman, speak to that. But with the dwarf mistletoe and the undergrowth there, it's a risk. Three hundred and sixty-five days, seven days a week. It is always a risk. It's been that, you know, my twenty-six years being at the fire department, we've always been told it's gonna burn. I guess I take that into consideration and with the added, which implemented the added checks, which were implemented two, three weeks ago when we hit the hot spell.
Well, I do appreciate the checks. So you're doing the checks because then you're telling me there's a risk. So, and I don't want a risk. Uh, I'll give up my hot dog and hamburger cooking on the fire pit for a week or two weeks while the heat ban's on. And that's the only thing I, I'm still haunted by the Cloverdale Fire. You know, uh, being involved and being out there and seeing how fast the fire can move, uh, that's why I'm concerned.
And if I could just add, uh, lastly, Mayor, um, the risk in my twenty-six years of the department has not been in the approved fire pits. The risk is, is done by those burning after-hours, hidden, hidden from roads. You know, we call it partying. That is the true risk. And the near misses that we've encouraged or encountered over the years have all been in those places. I do not know of a, a case that has actually happened in an approved, uh, burning pit.
Thank you. Councilor Zarokoski.
To the, um, and it's great that we're having this conversation. To the fire chief, what was the cause of the Cloverdale Fire?
The cause is released as being a lightning strike.
Thank you. What was the cause of the fire a few years ago on Shellbrook Highway just north?
Cratwell.
Cratwell Fire. What was the cause of that?
I can't speak specifically to.
I can't speak specifically to that. I just heard hearsay that it was considered the quad fire. So it was considered
So two forest fires caused by lightning strike and a quad. Okay, thank you.
Now, with that said, he sparked another question for me. Spark, sorry. Is, when we put a fire band on, does it include banning recreation vehicles from being in the Little Red or, or in the area? Like ATVs, now that we know? Because I know when we looked at the Cloverdale Fire, that's, it was along a trail. So they first thought it was an ATV. But then they found the tree that got hit by lightning. So when is there a fire band on, is that also banning ATVs from those areas?
As far as I know, Mayor, under my authority, under bylaw 22 of 2008, that would not speak to banning vehicles. I'd have to refer that to a solicitor. But that would be my understanding. It would just be on the burning itself.
Okay, thank you. That's something we can look at. Thank you. Okay. Any other inquiries?
Tara Lennox-Ep.
Oh, go ahead.
A question for administration. Are ATVs currently allowed within Little Red River Park?
No. Go ahead, Director.
Thank you, Mayor Dion. To Counselor Lennox-Ep's inquiry, so under our recreation facilities and parks bylaw, no ATVs aren't allowed or approved within. We do, for a special event purpose, if they have a specific purpose that's under control, it's under someone that's, you know, properly in position to operate it in a safe way, we do that under a controlled manner. But just general recreation usage, no, it's not approved.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else under inquiries? Okay, hearing none, I'll move on to inquiry responses. We have none. We have none. Notice of motions? Oh, Counselor Zarikowski.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to ask to leave to hear this tonight, if I may.
Go ahead.
I'd like to read my
You got to hear the motion first, then we'll ask for leave.
So my notice of motion is this, that a no parking sign at the corner of 17th Street West and Second Avenue, on the northwest corner, be removed.
Thank you. And I have a notice of motion that I'd like to also be heard. That the mayor's office, for its correspondence to the province of Saskatchewan, requesting reevaluation occur every two years. As the four-year swing, today's marketplace does not make sense. That the mayor's office engage the Saskatchewan Urban Municipalities, SUMA, the Mayor's Caucus, and the Saskatchewan Association of Rural Municipalities to combine an aggressive effort to change the provincial legislation on all properties in the province of Saskatchewan to be evaluated every two years. Thank you. Any other notices? Okay, with that, I'll move to
Tara Lennox-Ep.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I have three. The first one is that the city of Prince Albert implement the Call to Action Number 43, fully adopt and implement the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples as the framework for our reconciliation. My next motion is that the city of Prince Albert adopt the Call to Action Number four, sorry, Number 57, that the city of Prince Albert provide education to public, to city public servants on the history of Aboriginal peoples, including the history and legacy of residential schools. The United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples Treaties and Aboriginal Rights, Indigenous Law, and Aboriginal Crown Relations. This includes skill-based training, intercultural competency, conflict resolution, human rights, and anti-racism. And lastly, that the city of Prince Albert implement the Call to Action Number 88, that the city of Prince Albert provide long-term Aboriginal athlete development funding, continued support for North American Indigenous Games, including funding for hosting games. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and now I'm going to move to motions. And we have a motion from Counselor Miller, public washrooms downtown. You're up.
Thank you, Mayor Dion. So a public washroom in the downtown area. And I, I believe it's very important because during this period, there really hasn't been a place for anybody to actually use the bathroom in our downtown core because businesses are, you know, like the mall. So the mall has public washrooms in there. You can't just go into the mall anymore. And I mean, that's lifted now, but we've learnt a lot during this COVID situation that we went through. I remember going to FCM and in Edmonton on White Avenue, they have public washrooms that are transparent. The only thing that there is, it's a beautiful facility. You can see in, they can see, you can see out, both ways. And there's no, and I don't know if anybody has ever been to White Avenue, but things happen on White Avenue. So
Stay in a hotel on White Avenue.
Yeah, we did. And it was, it was a very interesting time there. And we've, I learnt a lot while I was there. It's right on the corner and it's, there's no place where you can go in behind or anything. It's like in a corner somewhere. I just think that we need to look into this a little bit more. I've been hearing complaints and in order to, you know, receive complaints, I, I really, I think I bring complaints here, I have to have a solution. So that's my solution. I'm not too sure what else to do about that. But I'm thinking a few properties, like the corner right over here, there's an empty lot. We can install a washroom there. Very popular down on our riverbank. And I believe that we need one there as well. And I, and you know, I, I understand that there's a, we have a, we have a situation in our city. And there's no doubt about it. I just think that we need to help it out and start providing facilities for everyone in our city.
Okay, when you say look, you mean like bring a report back to us? Because that's what I would support. Because I'm going to know, I'm going to need to know where, the cost to build it. But then the main cost I'm going to want to see is cost to operate it because we're going to have to clean it on a hourly basis or something. So there's going to be a cost. And that's my concern. So that's what you're looking for? You're back on.
Sorry. It's all right. Yes. So a, a report back to council on, on how much that would cost for a couple of locations in our downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have the city clerk just amend that. And while she does that, we'll go to Counselor Edwards.
Thank you, worship. I'll second the motion. And I would like to talk on it.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I, I'm anxious to see a report on this, but I don't want to see just the general porta potty report. This needs to be done right. I think when we were in Halifax, we saw some, I think they were
Sea cans.
Sea cans.
They were sea cans.
And they washed. Actually, there was some systems in there where they, I think, once you left, it pressure washed everything. And it was pretty darn good. And I think if we're going to do it, we need to do it right. You're right, the cost to clean these, if we don't do something like that, is going to be astronomical and, and it's not going to make some sense. So hopefully, we come back with some elite models.
Yeah, so if the administration, whoever that's going to fall to, can contact Halifax. Because we were there. They were made out of sea cans. They were self-cleaning. They just turned on two taps. They made sure nobody was in there. They turned on two taps and it, it was quite efficient. Exciting times for counselors. We toured washrooms. So that's what we do at conferences. We look at, well, we look, it's a solution. And that's what we look for. We, we know what our problems are. So when we go to these conferences, we walk around and we ask this whole city, this is our problem. What is your solution? So we'll make sure that they look into Halifax because that was a great solution. Okay, any other comments? I'll prompt, can I prompt the question? Okay, I'll prompt the question. Okay, the question's now open. Counselor Zap?
Yes.
Right on. Ask unanimously for a report. So accept it. Okay, now under motions, I'll get you to rise, Counselor Zarikowski, to ask that yours be heard tonight.
So I ask, please, council, that
Oh, sorry again. Thank you. Okay, thank you. We'll prompt the question and then you can make the motion to leave. It's coming. Okay, it's on the screen. Okay, it is open. Counselor Zap?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. I put you down a second there. Counselor Kilmer.
I'll second.
Thank you. Sorry. So we prompt the question and he's asking for leave to be granted. So we need two-thirds to grant leave to hear his motion to remove the stop sign. Yeah, the no parking sign. Okay, we need one more vote. Did I ask Counselor Zap? Were you, okay, I got you. It passed. Leave has been granted. So you're up, Counselor. Just give the clerk one minute. I'll send it after yours. He might have a lesson. Yep, and Counselor Kilmer, you're second here. Thank you. Okay. Isn't it west?
Oh, was it east or west?
West.
Okay. You're up, you're up, Counselor. Now that we got the direction right, you're up. And you're live.
Thank you. So I'll just ask council support for removing this no parking sign, which has been a bit of a thorn for the local business owner for a number of years, not needed. And a bit of an impediment insofar as the activity that's going on in that intersection is coming right around the corner. And for whatever reason, there's been no action for a number of years. So I ask that the sign be removed.
Thank you. And it's interesting because I have one, but I'm just going to ask the department if they'll voluntary do. If they don't, I'll bring it up at the next meeting. Because for some reason, we're putting up no parking signs. Okay. No, we don't want yellow paint either. Because it's not needed. Okay, I'm going to prompt the question.
Tara Lennox-Ep here.
Yes, go ahead.
I just had a question for the director. Why is it that a no parking sign was placed at this location?
Director, Public Works.
Thank you very much for that question. I guess I just need a little clarification because of the intersection you speak of, Second Avenue is quite wide. So it, which business is it in front of? The Taco Time?
It's on 17th Street. Correct, Ted?
Yeah.
It's on 17th Street.
Okay, so as I look right now, presently speaking, there's no, no parking sign between the exit of their drive-through and the corner? But are you talking beside their drive-through?
So
There's only one parking, no parking sign there. Oh, you got to turn your mic on. Turn your mic on. I'll leave you. Go ahead.
And so there, as I come off Second Avenue onto 17th Street, there's a no parking sign nearly immediately there. Perhaps further down than three to five feet. Certainly, I'm going to let my emotion stand that we remove it. And if there's some sort of kerfuffle that is caused by that decision, then we can, we can revisit. But that's, that is the location I'm talking about.
There's only one sign there.
Yes, I, I, I see it now. It's on the street light, right across from the drive-through window.
Yes.
Yes. The only reason that I can see is that there could have been an issue where people were parking right up against the crossing where you exit the drive-through and making it a little difficult to look down the street. But that is a case throughout the city of Prince Albert. There is a, a bylaw as how many meters from a crossing that you can park. So, yeah, it, it, it could be removed if that is the desire of council. But that might have been the reason it was installed there because of more than one business in the area. There might have been people parking there.
I just suggest that the nature has changed and there's, there's a bad influence caused. More problems than, I'm not speaking right now. There's more problems there than
Yeah. And what I don't understand is when we go to put a no parking sign up, whether it's in front of a residence or a business, should we not talk to the business or the resident? Like, I, I, I looked up at the one on Guy. It was somebody complained. So we didn't even talk to the residents. We just poof, went and put a sign up because of one person. And I think it's important that the businesses or the residents, before any sign goes up, that we consult with them. Because they would know whether it's a problem or not. Okay, can I prompt the question? No? Can you kill your light, Wes? Okay, just give me a minute. She's putting in a
Tara Lennox-Ep, I have one other question for the director.
Oh, go ahead.
Director, if this sign, no parking sign is removed, is this still a, a location where, under our current bylaws, that it is, parking is not allowed even without the sign?
Thank you for the question. So if I'm, as I look on the street right now, on, on street view, the issue, I would see it as the space between the crossing when you exit the drive-through and to the sign being about one vehicle's length. So that when you leave the, the, the drive-through, you're able to look both left and right and see if traffic is coming. Beyond that point, there's no reason that you can't park there. As a matter of fact, I can see vehicles parked there right now.
Okay. Okay, I've opened the question to vote. Counselor Zap?
Yes.
Okay, Ted, did you vote? Yeah, you just did now. Thank you. Carrie unanimously. Sign's gone. Accepted. Okay, we have no public forum? Oh. I got too many pieces of paper. Oh, you took my paper. Oh, she's going to put it up. Okay, so I need to pass the chair to Counselor Miller, Deputy Mayor. And you're live. And just leave your mic on. I'll leave you live.
All right, Mayor, go ahead.
All right, Mayor, go ahead.
I first asked that leave be granted, to authorize me to start effectively soliciting the government to change revaluation from four to two years, as we know this year, the grief it's caused us. But in moving forward, I asked an analyst to look at this for us, and they're worried that even next revaluation is gonna be worse, because they're looking at COVID, and COVID brought the prices up.
So Mayor Deion, we need a seconder?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Good chairman.
Go ahead. Who's Teddy?
Yes, it was a great speech, I can't wait to hear the rest of it, I hope it's shorter, and about I'll second it.
Thank you.
I'm up now?
Yes, you are, two minutes and, you know.
No, I'll be just, oh, this is about the leave, so I'm just asking you support so I can do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think the motion tells you what I'm doing. Nope, now she tells me, now I prompt the vote. Votes only.
So voting is open? Counselor Zap?
Yes.
Thank you.
It passed unanimously, thank you. Deputy Mayor, accepted it?
Yes, I do. And you can go ahead, Mayor Deion. Timer's on, two minutes.
I'll just have that, well, I think my motion speaks for itself, we all know the headaches, we've all taken the phone calls, and we continue, and we have to move to make this right, so. And I think it's the time now, I've talked to other cities, Saskatoon's in a worse position than us, they're actually gonna put their step in, it's so big in some cases, over two years, Yorkton suffering, so I think this is the time that we can get all the cities and everyone on board to go after the provincial government, to do it every two years instead of four.
Thank you. Moved by the mayor, second by Counselor Zierkowski, thank you. Okay, you prompt the vote. Oh, that's right. I think there's, what you call those? Wagon wheels.
Yeah, because we won't be long. You're good.
That was really mean.
Yes.
Thank you. It passed, yes.
Passed unanimously, so thanks, everyone. Okay, Counselor Kilmar, I see you have your light on.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you, seconder.
Seconded.
No, we can't hear them, we have to read them, we don't know what they are. Okay, so I'm prompting the question. Counselor Zierkowski, seconded it. Okay, the vote is open, Counselor Zap?
Yes.
Thank you, we're adjourned, and we're just gonna take a quick ten-minute break, because we just have one issue to talk about, and then we'll be adjourned. So a ten-minute break, please.